The purpose of this meeting was to meet the representatives from the new company and allow the board an opportunity to ask questions. We will open up to the floor after the boards finish their questions for approximately half an hour. We are going to follow our public comment policy that I believe most people are aware of, how that works. First thing I'm going to ask us to do, and we'll start with the board, and we'll do a round robin, and then meet the representatives of the company, and if you want to come up at the table, please feel free to do so. Gail, I'll let you start.
I'm Gail Hoffman, deputy town clerk.
George Sennett, town supervisor.
Terry Ives, town board member.
Gilte Ward, town board member.
Matt Ritz, town board member.
Now it's your turn.
Yep, Chris Stanton, project development director for Northland Power, the current owner of the Hybridge Wind Project.
Margaret Wells, vice president of development for Invenergy, the soon-to-be-new owner of Hybridge Wind.
Dan Colong, developer with Invenergy, should be developer for the project.
I guess the very first question is, when is this transfer supposed to be happening?
So it's kind of, you want to cover it?
Yeah, I'll cover that. So this week, we should be submitting our request for approval for Section 70, which is a statute, in New York State, you need the Public Service Commission's approval to transfer a permit to construct and own and operate a power plant. So because the Hybridge Wind Project has its Article 10 certificate, which is the permission to construct, we need to formally apply to the Public Service Commission, and they evaluate Invenergy's, you know, ability to take on the responsibilities of that Article 10 certificate, and then within 30 to 60 days, sometimes longer, depending on what other businesses in front of the commission, they can approve that transfer. And so that is a prerequisite to a transfer to a sale being closed. Obviously, Invenergy, Margaret can speak to this, is extremely well-qualified as a purchaser of the project. They have multiple operating wind farms and solar projects in New York State, and they've got many more that are under construction and in development. So we don't expect there to be any issues with that state process, but it is a lengthy process, and it is a prerequisite to us being able to close on the sale.
Okay, I guess we're going to jump to Margaret. Do you want to give us a little bit of background on Invenergy and...
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and just a little background on myself, too. So I'm a New York resident, I live outside Ithaca, I've got a farm, I raise sheep in addition to this day job, and I've been with Invenergy for seven years. Before joining Invenergy, I developed a community-owned wind farm in my town, and partly on my own farm. So I spent many years, you know, on both the community member and the participant landowner side of the house, as, you know, not a formal developer at all. I was just a community member, I owned a wholesale plant nursery, I just wanted wind turbines on my windy hill. So that's how I ended up coming to Invenergy, because I love the wind business, been here seven years and totally love it. Invenergy is Chicago-based, it's not a utility-connected company, it's just a privately-owned company. We've got about 2,000 employees now, the headquarters is Chicago, but we've got regional offices all around the U.S. and all around the world. So we have an office in Ithaca with about 10 people, we have an office in Buffalo, New York, about 10 people, New York City has about 20 people in it, and then we've got offices in Tokyo and Portland, Oregon, and all kinds of other far-fetched places like that. We've got, I think it's 30,000 megawatts' worth of projects built, so that's over 100 wind projects, I think it's about 50 solar projects, we do some battery storage, we do some transmission projects, things like that. And so this project came to our attention because we are part of, so there's, there's a dynamic where upstate New York has a lot of renewable energy, mostly because of Niagara Falls, and New York City has lots of fossil fuel energy, because they don't have anything else, basically, down in the city. And so New York instituted a program called Tier Four a couple of years ago. They said, "We need more connections to send clean power down to New York City, because then the city cleans up, and then we make less pollution, and the air's cleaner for everybody." And that puts downstate dollars into upstate pockets, as I see it. Same way we ship milk and timber down to the city, because we make more of it than we need to consume, same thing with electrons. So we were awarded a contract under this Tier Four program a year and some ago, called Clean Path New York. So what it is, it's going to be a new underground transmission line that goes from Delaware County down to New York City, and connected to that, one way or another, are 23 wind and solar projects, all around the upstate, everywhere from outside Buffalo, all the way to Clinton County in northern New York, all of which basically get to claim those New York City dollars and put them into local pockets. And so this project is one of that portfolio. And so when we were talking to Northland, and we said, "Is there any chance that we could buy that project from you and bring it to fruition?" Because Northland was saying turbine pricing is crazy, which it is, because steel pricing is crazy, in the same way for everybody here who builds and buys things, and you know the price of pretty much everything's gone nuts. Same thing with the price of turbines. But we're hoping that with our larger buying power, because Northland is a smaller company than my company, we'll be able to get better turbine pricing and build the product.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to the board to see if you have questions.
How soon are we going to start seeing some construction?
As soon as we can get some decent turbine pricing. It's in our interest to build it as soon as we can. Just, I don't know if it actually happened today, or if it's going to happen tomorrow, depending on the wind, but we just built what I think of as a sister project to this Hybridge project in Lewis County, New York. So that's outside, you know, between Watertown. It's also 103 megawatts, it's the same vestas turbines. I started working on that project in 2016, when I joined Invenergy, and it's finally about to go live today. And if it doesn't today, because we didn't have enough wind, it'll be tomorrow. And that's, you know, that's an example of how both, we're going to see projects through, we want to get them built, but also how there's a lot of stop and start. That project had its own highs and lows. There was a time where we thought the whole thing was done, it's never going to get built for X, Y, and R reasons, and then we get through those reasons, and it gets back on the boards, and outstanding.
Now, were any of those issues permitting issues for the project itself with the state? My understanding that this project has been fully permitted.
Yep, it is. And we've vetted the permits that Northland has got, and they're totally sound. There's a whole nother raft of effort. So we have an entire leg of my team that works only on permits, because what we learned over the past several years is that the Article 10 permitting process and all the other state stuff is so darn complicated, that if you don't specialize in it, you're going to muck something up. So we have a whole team who just specializes in that. So what we're going to have to do, it is fully permitted, and they did a great job, the Northland team, but then there's this whole second raft of stuff called compliance filings, which is basically, you have to get a permit to use your permit now. And so we got to do that. I think you've already filed the...
The tree clearing.
Tree clearing one, yep. So that's great, that's a huge step in the right direction, but then there's another 52 more to go. And so our team is going to start digging into getting all those filings ready to file, and then get them filed with the state. And as you probably remember, through some of the conversations in the permitting process, you can only clear trees in the winter, because of bats. So I think we have November 1 until April 1 as the clearing window, March 31st. And so we're going to take a look at, are we going to clear the trees this coming winter in preparation for doing civil work next year, or in preparation for doing civil work whenever we can get the civil work done?
Okay, so at this point in time, would it be premature to ask, do you anticipate changes in this project?
If there were any changes, I think they'd be very slight. Like, one of the things that our engineering team was looking at, that we learned, that came from lessons learned at the project we just built, there's something called the limits of disturbance, which is how, you know, if you look at a finished road that's 16 feet wide, you didn't only have your equipment on that 16-foot-wide path, you had the equipment out to the side, you were clearing topsoil and stockpiling stuff and all those things. So the corridor of what you might actually run your equipment on defines this thing called limits of disturbance. So what we learned in the past couple of years of building this project in Lewis County is, we didn't give ourselves enough elbow room in our limits of disturbance. And so some of the corners were a little too tight, and the turbine delivery truck couldn't get around the corner, because it wasn't quite right. And so our construction team came back to us and said, "Never again are you going to put us in that tight a spot. We're going to do this, we're going to widen a little corner here, we're going to give a little better spot here." At the end of the day, it doesn't end up with more impacts, but it makes it safer for the workers, because you don't want people jammed up with trucks that can't pass and things like that. So I think the only thing we would anticipate doing is widening little bits of the limits of disturbance for better buildability and worker safety.
So would it be, my observation correct, that there's really no definite timeline, candidly, at this point in time?
Yep.
Okay.
You would definitely be able to, I mean, we're going to file the compliance filings as soon as we can get that stuff rolling. There won't be any secret to the timing when we start to have it, because the town will be an active participant in the run-up to actually building it. For things like, you know, there's notice before the road use agreement, we have to file the letter, yeah, the letter of credit for the decommissioning bond, apologies in advance to town clerk for the fact that it's going to cost lots of little bits of paperwork and mailing back and forth, and I'm sorry, it's a giant pain. And, you know, I'm...
I'm very...
But no, no, that'll be a surprise to you, we'll stay in total contact.
Now, can you provide us with some information, perhaps after the meeting, as to towns you've worked in?
I'm thinking...
We will reach out, we'll do some homework here...
Please do.
...to take a look at pluses and minuses, so maybe any expectations of shortfalls that we may have to deal with, the board will have some advance knowledge on.
Totally. Absolutely.
Okay, I'm going to, once again, throw this back, I keep asking too many questions.
So the project that you had in Lewis County, it's going to go online today.
Yep.
You said it started in 2016?
Yep.
What started in 2016? That's eight years, I mean, you started permitting in 2016, or...
Sure did.
Okay, so what, how many years was that actually in construction?
It was two years of construction. And for all our New York projects, we like to do that. We like to, whenever possible, we do all the civil work, meaning the roads and the foundations in year one during the growing season, have a winter shutdown, and then put the turbines up and turn it all on in year two. It is certainly possible to do, not all of the work, but a fair amount of it can be done in the winter months if you absolutely have to, but it's so much harder and so much more expensive, that we don't prefer it. And if we can schedule it in a two-growing seasons schedule, we will. So we started digging holes in summer of '21 at that project, started in July. We had cleared the trees in winter of '21, as we call it, in March, did all the civil work in '21, turbines started getting delivered in May of '22. They were all standing up by September of '22, and the only reason there's been a six-month delay is National Grid, they weren't ready for us. They hadn't assigned a project manager, and so they were like, "Oh, we haven't ordered the parts," and there's a six-month lead time. And there we are.
Was that some of your biggest challenges, or what other challenges?
Most recently, that was the biggest challenge. Other challenges, so to your earlier question, were there permitting challenges? Not especially large ones. I mean, there are always questions that the agencies ask, and they push on this issue, and you give on that issue, and, you know, there's grassland bird concerns and bat concerns, and they want to make sure you're protecting the wetlands, and all that good stuff. But everything that I saw in Hybridge's permit is almost identical to everything in Number Three's permit. Number Three Wind is the name of that Lewis County project. In terms of other obstacles, let me think about that. So one of the things we, that I don't think Hybridge has, but that we had to work through for that project was, so that project's about 12 miles from Fort Drum. And so one of the initial concerns when we proposed it was, both from Fort Drum and Fort Drum's sort of supporting organizations, is this going to have a negative impact on the military base? Both on a specific basis of, are you actually going to impact a radar? And then on a larger basis, does that have any knock-on impacts to Fort Drum itself? Because Fort Drum is such a big economic generator, they didn't want to put the base at risk. And so by addressing the technical problem, we also addressed the larger problem. So what we did, the Fort Drum folks had me come to their air traffic control tower at Fort Drum, because their concern in this circumstance is that we're going to impact the radar. There's a weather radar, and there's an air traffic control radar. And so they brought me up in their air traffic control tower, and they said, "Look, this is, like, look here on this screen, this is the problem we see, this is a problem that Maple Ridge causes, if you get built, you're going to cause more of this problem, how do we fix it?" And we basically just rolled up our sleeves and figured it out. We said, "Okay, so how does the problem happen? How do we solve it? What are the heights, the elevations, the technical bits?" And they were so great to work with. And so we just kind of figured it out, and changed the elevations of some turbines, and the whole thing got solved. And so we signed a mitigation agreement with Fort Drum, and we're off to the races.
One of our issues, I realize, is town, is town road. And the project has already been delayed, you know, I'm going to look at our highway superintendent, where's Bob Beck there? We have a road called White Hill Road, which appears to be one of the significant roads to be impacted.
Yep.
We anticipate it's going to need a lot of work. We have to do something with that road at this point in time. Yet how much money, which is local taxpayers' dollars, state and chip's money, should we put into it, and then perhaps have the wind company come back and say, "You got to tear it all apart, because, you know, it's a pretty straight road, however, it's got some little dips and things in that that could be problematic." Would you be able to have somebody look at it in the near future and say, you know, because even just to patch the road, we're looking at thousands of dollars?
Sure.
And patching the road is not going to be satisfactory, you know, when the permit, it's simply not going to hold up. So that's an immediate concern we have coming up this summer.
Yeah. Okay, let me think about that for a second. The way, what pops to mind is this, it seems to me, if I understand you right, the road needs to be patched right now, just for public safety.
Yep.
You don't want to invest a dollar more than you have to, knowing that the wind company and the big stuff's going to roll through and mess it all up again. Is that fair to start with?
Or are we going to do some rebuilding that?
Well, we would never expect the town, so we would, first things, we would never come to you in a year or two when this is all ready to get built, we would never come to you and say, "You got to tear that out at your dime, never." But I also can't imagine we would ask you to tear out anything at all, because the way, I honestly can't remember the terms of your road use agreement, so, which is about to be our road use agreement. But generally speaking, the way we have always done road use agreements, we do, we do a pre-construction engineering assessment. Some third battery company goes out there, they drill boreings, they check on things, they take measurements and pictures and all kinds of good stuff. Whatever condition the road is in, when we find it, we, you know, if there's not culverts and bridges and super-sharp corners, if it's just a straight road in poor condition, it's on us to keep it in condition during the project. And if potholes arise or cracks arise that are a safety problem on us, it's on us to fix it, unless there was a different arrangement in the road use agreement. And at the end of the project, then we go back and rebuild entirely as needed. You know, we want to give you something as good or better as what we found. And I would suggest you not do a giant overhaul on this road now, because if we're only going to add wear and tear to it, you would want that wear and tear to be on the lower-quality patch job, not the nice job. Is that...
See, haven't you already done road boring and things?
We have, yep.
And we've also, I believe, spent some money, which is local taxpayers' dollars, to check on that work, and given the amount...
And we'll do it again.
And given the amount of time that's passed, once again, some of those things are probably...
Oh, no, we'll do that again, and if you want to set up an escrow account between ourselves and the town...
That's part of our agreement.
So back in the Article 10, there was...
Yeah, we have that, that's part of our agreement, yeah.
Okay, right, well, then we'll just keep the escrow agreement to make sure that you're made whole for that kind of thing. That's no problem.
Other things, we have been spending some money, which we haven't, I don't think, billed anything back yet.
No, that's right.
And at what point in time do we start billing things back?
No, we had kind of anticipated that we would see some bills from you guys, and we, let's talk, you know...
Okay, that's something we need to talk about, okay.
We've disclosed that to Invenergy, that there would likely be invoices from the town, you know, associated with that funded escrow account.
Because we hired an engineering firm and reported with some things.
Who's your engineer?
Lamont Engineering.
Sure.
Board questions?
I have a question. One of the concerns that has arisen from a number of people, people on the board and in the public, is that our host community agreement, I'm looking at it, and according to the way it's written, it should be followed by you. Have you read this? Do you see any problem?
I saw no problems in it at all, I had read it.
Because that has been a concern.
And I think other agreements, road use agreement, what have you, the host community agreement, the IDA, I know you're supposed to be there tomorrow morning.
I've actually read every one of them, but I couldn't tell you the terms in them today.
But you're adopted in some entirety, you're not...
Some entirety, and have every intent of meeting every obligation that Northland has made.
Are you planning to be about 100 megawatts?
Yeah, we're building the same project that they got the permit.
Are you changing the number of turbines?
Not unless there was some, like, if there was a problem with one of the sites that had not, that we had...
Did it have been some talk about lowering the number of turbines? I heard.
Well, one thing we had discussed, there was always a possibility that if a different turbine technology was selected, you could reduce the number of turbines. So under the Article 10 permit, it's always you can reduce the number of turbines, you can't easily increase, right? That's something I think we talked about last summer or spring, that there were, you know, when we had not made a final turbine selection. It sounds like, Margaret alluded to Vestas.
Yeah.
You guys saw that, so we took these guys on a tour of the Bluestone project, so they've seen the V-150s.
Same thing as what we just put up there in Laugueville, and same thing as that is both what Northland has been considering and what we would probably build, too. It's the best turbine for this site, so...
So numbers are looking...
Numbers are the same.
They would be the same?
Yeah. I mean, Northland, from my perspective, Northland developed and permitted a really good project. It's part of why we want to own it, it was well put together. We've looked at many other projects that we wouldn't want to own, and this is a great one.
Board members have other questions? I guess at this point in time, we will open up to the public, and we, once again, are going to ask, we can only have one person speaking at a time, we do try to record this, so that what we can hear, and we'll limit each speaker to one opportunity and five minutes. But we'll open it up to the floor, if people have questions.
If I may. Am I right in understanding that there will be battery houses or some kind of energy storage involved in this? You can't just rely on transmitting sheer wind energy, because it doesn't roll on time, right? You have to build it up before you can transmit it?
So we can, the battery is part of the permit and part of the project. I think it's an open question whether or not it gets built in the end. We'd like to, but right now...
I would just like to know what the battery technology is in that case.
Has not been selected at all. I would expect it would be lithium-ion, because that's mostly what we build these days, and that's what's quite competitive, but not determined.
To my point there, there are many kinds of lithium-ion batteries.
Yes.
The newer lithium-ion phosphate do not contain PFOS and other toxic chemicals that, I mean, they're shutting down farms in Maine right now because of contamination.
So we use lithium-ion phosphate on our battery projects.
That's good to know. My other question regarding that is, there are a lot of hunters in the area, a lot of people rely on that food. If a stray bullet hit any piece of your equipment that's going up, is that going to cause a problem? Can we foresee restrictions on hunting beyond what's already normal?
No restrictions happening. If it happened, it's on us to fix. It certainly might cause a problem, it would depend on what it hit and how it hit it. But that's a risk we take everywhere, and it's okay. I mean, generally, I think stray bullets from hunting are lesser risk than intentional bullets from people who are looking to create damage, like they did in Carolinas this spring. But, you know, for example, our three operating projects, wind projects in New York, are in very hunting, happy locations. People have tree stands right out from under the turbines. You know, the landowners tell me their hunting stories about the interactions between the wildlife and the neighbors and the car and the turbine, like, "Oh, that time the turbine turned on, and a deer were standing there," so I had to pick it off, or it started to run. So, you know, I hear a lot about how people hunt around our turbines and our equipment just fine, so...
One last thing, if I may. You know, the cost of living is becoming an issue in Shenango County, there's a nonprofit out of green, estates over 5,000 dwellings are abandoned, and largely over the cost of living. Does Invenergy have any kind of a nonprofit arm? Is it possible to convince your company to do that for the sake of a similar project to what you were talking about, your own little wind farm? Could we do something to benefit the residents that's mutually agreeable to everybody?
I think we'd have to talk about that more, but I'm happy to talk about it. It's a new idea, so I couldn't give you an answer off the bat.
Well, most large corporations have a nonprofit arm or wing, and...
We do give donations, for sure.
Right.
So that's a normal thing in the part of development and operating our projects, we make contributions to all kinds of, to local beneficiaries, to the VFW for beautification effort, or for the, you know, the FFA for going to the conferences.
I'm just saying, more specifically, for the same lines of green energy, because, you know, everybody has an electric bill, that is a part of the cost of living.
So I think the way, for what I know about already in terms of existing programming, the way that a lot of the towns we've worked in do it is they reduce town taxes. Now, we're not in charge of what the town does with the money from the project, but that's one thing they can do. For example, the town in Orangeville, where we have an operating project, they zeroed out town property taxes for some number of years, and then they started building it back up again. And that's a way to basically put money in in a different way.
Yeah, there's a lot of taxes involved in our world today, though. More specifically, do you think we could entertain something in terms of a community green energy project that just directly benefits everyone?
We'd have to totally talk about it, I don't want to make any commitments off the bat.
I'm not asking you to make a commitment, I just wanted to know if you thought that would be a possibility to...
Worth talking about, I'd love to hear your ideas. I've spent a great deal of time in the community energy space, so I have a lot of experience on the pros and cons of how to do it.
That's exactly what I asked, thank you.
No, you're right.
There's something I've been looking at, too, for grants and other opportunities that would benefit the community. You know, we did attempt to have Community Solar here, unfortunately, what happened with that was a NICAG interconnect fee, that really kind of killed the project. But once again, you're looking for opportunities, they don't always happen, or they don't always come together, but it's possible. Other people from the floor.
Is this wind project in coordination with supposedly the expansion of the one transmission line? How are you going to connect to the grid?
You know, more about the interconnect than I do.
Has NICAG talked about extending that line locally?
They came to me, they approached me about five years ago.
You mean the one that was completed, or another one?
Yeah, I've heard, they haven't done anything on my property, and it was like five years, they've already agreed for the right part of the right-of-way.
Interesting, so I, all I can say is, we, as part of the project, we talk to NICAG every single week about the design of our interconnection facility, it's a really complicated puzzle to solve. And at this time, I have, they've never mentioned that they would be upgrading that line. Like, we have designed everything according to the line that's there now, that's been what's on all those plans that I've seen, but they are completely free to upgrade that line, and that's something we would have, that would cause us to have to redo a lot of our engineering at our dime, or Invenergy's dime, depending on when that happens, but they have not mentioned that as part of their communication to us, that they're going to be upgrading that line. That's really interesting information.
I know that NICAG and National Grid have been wanting to do a number of upgrades all around their territories. There was a set of upgrades that was approved about two months ago called the Phase 2A. I don't have a better name for you than that. It covered portions of both NICAG and National Grid territory that were found to be sort of like the most critical stuff that needs to get upgraded, especially in areas where a lot of renewable projects are proposed, and there wasn't sufficient interconnection for all the stuff that's been proposed. There are several other phases after Phase 2A that have been proposed and not yet approved, but I could, I could guess, not knowing any of the specifics, that that upgrade that they were talking about might be in one of those phases. Maybe one of the ones that is approved already, or maybe one of the ones that isn't approved already. But I know for sure they're trying to do upgrades on all kinds of stuff.
So you're just planning on hooking into the existing grid, though?
Existing grid as-is, yep.
Yeah, and there already was a significant upgrade in the transmission line through the town, that, was it two or three years ago?
I mean, the main high tension line that runs down 35, or...
That was upgraded?
They replaced it with new poles in it, yeah.
Oh, no, then they upgraded other aspects of that, I believe. I'd have to check with NICAG, I know they put new poles in, expanded things, cleaned stuff up, that may be another...
They wanted an extra 50 feet of right-of-way to build another series of poles.
Oh, okay, that I'm not privy to, I haven't heard anything about that.
What I can tell you, utility poles or utility plans, just keep getting put in the hopper until they get selected.
Also from the floor.
Could you say again, what was the kind of turbine you were going to use?
Vestas, 4.5 megawatt most likely. The ones that had already.
Vesta, 4.5 megawatt. And that's the one you used in this other project you're talking about?
That's right.
Are those turbines the same height as the turbines here?
Mm-hmm. Same model. Or 4.2 megawatt, I forget.
So if it's a V-150? So the V-150 is what's being installed at our project down in Broom County? So if you want to take a look at, it would look exactly like those turbines. Whether Invenergy selects a 4.2 or a 4.5 megawatt machine, visibly from far away, it's not going to look any different. It's going to be, you know, it's the exact same length blade, same height pole. The only difference is what's inside that box in terms of how much energy.
So the sound, the sound?
Sounds the same.
Sounds the same.
So Northland, in our, in our permit, our last compliance files that we filed with the state, the tree clearing plan envisioned a Vestas V-150 at that same tip height, 4.5. So it would, if Invenergy chooses not to make any changes there, that would be identical to what we've already presented the state and what we did. So we did some sound modeling as part of the amendment. So we requested an amendment to the Article 10 certificate. I think one thing we added was we added a, increased the battery storage size slightly. And we, what are some of the other things we did? We moved a couple of turbines and we moved a critical collection line for this project pretty considerably by about two miles. So we sought, we requested all those changes from the state last summer. And as part of that process, the state required us to do some sound modeling to prove to the state that we were still in compliance with the sound limits that were in the permit. And so if you are interested, you can look up that, that sound file that was reviewed and approved.
That takes us a slightly different direction. Chris, is Bluestone operational at this time?
No. Bluestone is fully constructed and we are waiting for, similar to what Marguerite described with National Grid, we are waiting for NISEG to give us permission to begin generating electricity.
You've been waiting for how long?
We were originally scheduled to, originally we were seeking to, way originally we were seeking to connect in September 30th. That was our own, it was a result of our own delay that we delayed from September 30th through the end of December. But then we requested NISEG to connect us at the end of December. That slipped to February and then as a result of, basically, NISEG, the way utility works is they give you permission to take their line, they're, part of their lines out of service to connect the project when they know that demand is low. They don't want to inconvenience any other customer on the system. So obviously, they don't, for that reason, no utility wants to take the line out of service in the middle of winter because a lot of people use electricity for heating, obviously. So, and other critical needs. So typically, utilities like to have the interconnection happen in the spring or the fall. We were very hopeful that we would, we would begin generating electricity in the early April and right now it looks like early May, so we're behind by a couple of weeks. But we're very, very close to finish line, but this is a challenge that all New York utilities are facing is this large influx of renewable projects that want to connect to an antiquated system that was not originally built to serve power plants, it was to serve homes and businesses. And so NISEG and National Grid are both contending with the fact that just internally inside those organizations, they don't have a lot of, you know, when NISEG was bought out by Avangrid years ago and National Grid too, they lost a lot of those old experienced engineers. They don't have that same personnel and expertise. They'll tell you that straight up. And so one of the biggest challenges we face is just getting their, getting that expertise inside the organization to ensure that we're safely connecting the power plant to the system. They haven't brought a new power plant on in NISEG territory in quite a few years and National Grid's probably no different. And so we're at the, we're probably, Marguerite's project in northern New York and the Bluestone project in the southern tier probably, you know, it'll make it easier for the next ones, it'll make it easier for hybrid. You know, we're kind of the guinea pig in terms of this part of the state in terms of connecting a new project. So I hope, I hope for you guys say that hybrid goes a little smoother because it's been challenging.
You got something for?
You were talking about, yeah, so when we walked in, you were talking about turbines and the supply chain issues. Once that comes into line, is the financing in place to execute the entire project or is it segmented or how?
I'll explain how it works. So it's not in place today because it's too early to be in place. The way it works, so Invenergy is a big company and it has a ton of big investors and then each project, but that just mostly finances the development work up till building the project. And then each project gets its own financial package that gets put together. And so what we'll do is before we, just about the time we start digging holes, we'll go out to a bunch of different banks and other finance parties and say, hey, here's the opportunity. We're going to build this thing with this many dollars and this piece of equipment. Give us a price on your money. And we go to banks and investors of every kind and they all come and they make a bid or they don't make a bid. And so we then from that, that list of potential parties, we select the ones who gave us the best rates and we pull them all together and say, okay, you're doing this slice, you're doing this slice, here we all go. So we do something called a financial close for the construction loan. We'll build, we'll take out a construction loan just for about 18 months just to build the project and take that particular part of risk. Right before the project goes online, everything's standing up and ready to go, then we do the permanent financing. We do that whole exercise all over again and then a different set of banks or maybe the same ones, we'll do the permanent financing after that.
With the interest rates going up, how is that impacting your ability to get financing or pay off the debt or use the debt that you're currently using to get the financing?
That's a good question. So luckily, the renewable energy space right now has a ton of people who want to invest in it. So finding interested money is really not the hard part. So even, although the interest rates themselves are really challenging in terms of putting it into the financial model and having the whole thing work, there isn't a lack of interested parties per se. So.
But I'd imagine your interest rate between two years ago to today, because it's venture capital essentially where you're going, is it?
It's not venture capital.
Or not venture capital, but they're not, they're not low, low risk loans that you're getting.
They are, they are actually. Because the, because the project has a contract, this project and all the projects we build have long-term contracts with fixed revenue, it actually attracts a very low rate, low risk tolerant investor. So like some of the biggest investors in Invenergy, pension funds. And they tend to be the long-term owners of these kinds of things because they don't like risk. They like a nice contracted cash flow and that's what these things produce. The trick is getting, is threading the needle between the high interest rate and the low rate of return and the crazy cost of equipment.
Well, I'd seen that Blackstone had given you all about $3 billion.
Yep.
Literally over a year and a half ago, a year ago, something like that. Is any of that money going to be used or have you all?
Pays mine.
Have you all already borrowed through that to do the projects?
We wouldn't use it for the specific project because that just runs, that helps run the company.
Sure.
And build the pipeline. So that's all the early stage at risk, much more expensive money.
Sure.
For an individual project, they go out to banks.
Sure, okay.
Good question, sir.
So if, if no clearing gets done by April 1st of '24, no construction starts until at least '25, right?
Most likely yes, although I give you a squishy answer because, let's say we get April 1st of '24, we didn't manage to clear the trees because the stars were not aligned. All of a sudden, June 1st happens and bam, turbine pricing comes down, for example. We want to move right now and we didn't get the trees cleared in time. Can we still clear trees in the warm months? Yes, we can. It's really hard. I wouldn't choose to do it. Basically, you have to have an individual person sit at the base of every tree and question and watch for bats for three days. And if there's no bats, then you have the right to clear the tree. So obviously, there's a huge labor component to that. We wouldn't want to do it that way, but if we had to because of some dire circumstance, we could.
Yeah, from the floor.
What you just said about bats, I was confused. The bats are in the trees in the summer but not in the winter?
That's right. They roost and brood their babies in the trees in the warm months and they either hibernate in caves or they fly south for the winter. So in the winter months, there are no bats in trees, at least in theory, and so that's why we're allowed to clear them then.
Okay.
Any further questions? Does the board have questions?
You have a number of good, good neighbor agreements out there and I think the general understanding of good neighbor agreement or just being a good neighbor in general, it's a reciprocal dynamic, correct?
Yep.
You'd agree with that?
Yeah.
Well, part of being a good neighbor is looking out for the other side, being a benign presence in the community in this case. Splashing money throughout the community doesn't exonerate you from that obligation. So my question comes down to, will you be a good neighbor and install aircraft detection lighting systems?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know the answer, though.
Considering, considering the local planes, it's a good idea.
So we would have to, we'd have to look at that. I don't know the answer off the top of my head. We were proposing it at a project in northern New York and the military said we could not install it, for example, because they have a flight path and because military aircraft are intentionally designed to avoid radar, they said, we have no indication that our planes are going to trigger your protection system and we can't take that risk. So you need to look. In this case, I can't tell you off the top of my head if it would be possible, but I'm certainly, certainly have to look at it.
Okay. It's highly likely that it is possible. It might not meet your business plan and that's not an acceptable excuse, though, for not employing that.
Okay.
Because no one here, you know, if you're for turbines or against turbines, wants to see the night sky lit up with red FAA, you know, anti-collision lights.
Understood.
And that's a reasonable request.
I agree. All I can say is we'll look at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will say, just to add to that, so we've looked at the ADLS system for the Bluestone project and we haven't finished that analysis yet, but one thing we did note is that based on the topography, FAA did not give us permission to install that system on all the turbines. Turbines that were located next to areas of steep valleys and sharp topography, FAA was concerned about helicopters or single-engine aircraft flying low through valley invisible to our radar system and therefore the lights would not come on early enough to prevent a collision. So I know that, you know, there's obviously big differences in topography here versus, versus Broom County, but there's some similarities in the landscape. So, you know, obviously, it'll, it'll be up to Invenergy, but I will, I will caution that, you know, there's also, there is an element of, you know, whether it's the military or, you know, feasibility assessment as well. It's not, it's not just about, as you referenced, the cost item, there's also some other considerations that go into it.
Understood. Regarding battery storage, okay, will you be responsible for training local firefighters from the various, you know, outside communities on how to suppress and extinguish lithium fires? Because that's a whole different ballgame than a structured fire.
Understood. So yes, we will certainly meet with the fire departments and work through the protocol, but the protocol is, don't put it out. Stay back, keep the public safe. It's not your problem.
Okay. What about hazardous emissions from a.
The emissions from it are certainly not something you want to breathe in, but they're fundamentally not different than any other burning building, same stuff.
Absolutely not. If you go to the CDC's website, hydrogen fluoride is one of the toxic, highly toxic substances emitted from a lithium battery fire when it experiences a thermal runaway, okay? That stuff is so toxic, you get it on your skin and it can leach into your skin and down to your bone and burn you, okay? It is, it is terrible, terrible stuff.
Well, that's probably why we would never want the local fire, volunteer firemen to be subject to any of that.
But you also have an issue of, it doesn't stay localized and in a fire, the smoke dissipates. It will land on grasslands, maybe cattle feed on that and now they'll ingest it. Now, what happens now? It's getting into like the food chain, so to speak? Okay, that's an issue. The other part of that equation is when one did experience, I believe it was in Australia, they had a Tesla battery, mega battery pack. They, the surrounding community was told to close their windows, bring all their animals inside. That's not practical here for many people. And turn off your heating and cooling systems in winter. That's definitely not practical here, okay? So that just kind of illustrates, one, the seriousness of a potential fire if a battery pack does experience a thermal runaway. So, you know, there's a ripple effect. It's not just extinguishing a fire, which they really can't, they just let it burn out, okay, because it's self-perpetuating. So these are things that really should be your responsibility, not the surrounding communities. They shouldn't have to dig deep into their pockets to say, okay, in the event something happens, okay, you have the proper equipment or the protocols or everything else that's needed to keep the surrounding residents safe.
Yep.
And to protect, you know, this is an agricultural community. You have to, you know, protect our animals as well.
Completely agree, yep. I mean, we have an operating battery project in Orangeville, New York. We turned it on about this time last year. We worked with the fire department, we have an emergency plan, you know, worked through with town board, all these same concerns. We, to your, pardon, to the, to your right point, we do try to, well, we don't try to, we do use lithium iron phosphate batteries exclusively because they have a much lower fire risk and lower toxicity. And so that's part of why we use them, because we want to be a good neighbor. We don't want the incidents if, at all, ever. And if there were a technology that we could employ that was even safer, we would do so. Because, you know, to your point, we don't want to be the neighbor who causes a problem for anybody else. Because, understood, you can't bring livestock into your house. That's, that's not where the dairy cows go.
Jennifer?
Just a comment, not a question, kind of along the same lines. There have been some really awful stories coming out of the Bluestone project from residents of that area regards to roads being cleared. Mostly the people who are on the ground working, construction workers driving at excessive speeds through small towns, things like that. So again, just a comment, not a question, but I would ask that, that there be some responsiveness to things like that. So if someone's property is somehow damaged accidentally, that you guys are responding in an appropriate manner and something's being done. Because there have been several stories now out of just individual residents who may or may not have been against the turbines. I have no idea what their personal positions were, but just watching in one case, a sort of local historical marker be completely destroyed because it was in the way. So, I mean, it's no wonder there are people against big projects like this in rural areas when they're watching things that they grew up, you know, this is where they've spent their lives and seeing things damaged. So I just ask that when, when issues like that are raised, that someone be responsive and not just dismiss it because we're just, you know, just the people who live here.
100% agreed. I think when you do your homework and talk to folks in Little County, for example, I think you will, you will hear, I believe you will hear that we have been responsive as we, as we know how to be. Try to be a good neighbor, fix the roads after the fact. Right now, we're paving a road that was a dirt road and part of our agreement with the town, that project was after we did it, we would pave that road because the town wanted it to be paved and so we did. Whenever incidents came up, you know, a landowner would say, oh, the construction guys put a rock in the wrong place in my ditch and now it's flooding or whatever. Go back out there, make it right, move the rock, whatever it needs to be. I think, you know, I'd be happy to bring our construction team here. They've visited the site, they've been around. I think you'll find them really responsive folks. They're both from not far away and, you know, I have a sweatshirt that I didn't bring in tonight, but it says 300,000 hours safe work on that project. There were no reportable incidents in the entire construction of that project and that, I think, reflects not just a focus on worker safety, which is very important, but it's an overall level of diligence across all the aspects of the project. Last summer, there was potential for some important person to come visit the project. So I called up the construction manager, I said, there's a chance that the president of whatever is coming, coming to visit the project next week. Is that okay? Do you need to like clean things up or whatever? And he said, they can show up today. I, there's nothing I would change between today and next Friday if somebody, the queen can show up, I don't care. Things are the way they should be now and also next Friday. So I think you'll find that that is our approach to construction and to also to neighbor relations. We want things right today and also next week. I mean, because we're, to your point in terms of being a good neighbor, we own and operate projects in the long term. We're not in the business of just selling them off. And so we hire locally, both for construction labor and for operations staff. We're part of the community. We're going to be doing business together for a very long time. This is sort of like a marriage we're starting. So we have to figure out how to get along and make things work for both parties so that you're getting what you need out of it too, because it's, you don't want to feel like you aren't just the people who live here. And I know what you mean by that because I am a rural landowner myself. I have projects coming in my own town where I feel like I am in your shoes, like I am the small guy and there's the big developer and they never answer my call and what, why not? So I understand.
You do have to understand that you're going to have to back those words up because we've already had like a couple relationships here.
Right. I know.
That have walked out on us. And now we've got a new one. one, and, you know, you saying all this stuff, but you're going to have to back it up, because honest to God, we don't trust you.
I don't blame you, I wouldn't either recover in your shoes, but I understand.
Can I get a second question?
Sure.
It's really good, I think it's really good. So, initially, when the project began, we thought we were going to have two employees, and then it went down to, I think, one and a half, where we were going to share one with Bluestone and here. Have you all looked at that? Are we going to get two? Or are we going to just have one?
I'd get more than that.
Permanent staff?
Yes, I know. No, I understand, there are six permanent staff.
Because it was originally built, that this was going to be like a great employer, and then after, after steady state, we had one employee and then a half that will split between Bluestone. Is that?
No, we'll have more than that.
Okay.
I can't guarantee you.
I know, I know.
But as an example, so number three wind is the same size as this project, it has six full-time employees.
Okay.
If that's any indication of where this would land.
Sounds great.
And the lead tech is from Laugol.
Okay.
I mean, we always, ideally, we hire from the very community that we're in, because if we hire some dude from Wyoming, all he wants to do is get back to Wyoming one of these days, and he'll be gone. We want to hire people who work here for life.
Yeah.
You, so Calpine started, and now Northland has a lot of agreements with the town, a lot of people here, good neighbor agreements and stuff. Your plan, if you do acquire the wind farm, is you're going to honor all those
Yep.
Pages and pages of agreements.
Yep. I mean, as I, as I see it, those are all contracts that are legally binding, that were made between yourselves and other Calpine or Northland. That's, that is the infrastructure on which all the assumptions are built. And so, one thing is reneging on agreements is contractually, you know, it's not what the contract reads, but it fundamentally violates the trust that we have to build together. And I fully understand, to your point, you have no trust in me, and I understand why. All I can do, and all we can do, because Dan is going to be the day-to-day developer on this project, is hope to earn your trust by starting to do the things that you want us to be doing, that deserve it. So, I understand that we're starting in the basement, and that's okay.
To that point, one of the concerns that I've had since day one is the promises that are made, both by Calpine and Northland, was a big boom for local employment and other benefits to businesses in the local area. Now, somehow, that generalized statement kind of explodes, because when we consider local, we're talking about people in Guilford, and we're talking about people in Shenango County when you're talking to the IBA. And yet, when push comes to shove, and you actually start hiring people, we're talking about IBEW union people out of Benhampton. Benhampton doesn't have any interest in what we do here in Guilford. So, it's kind of two-faced, and that's the way a lot of people here see this, is we want to see benefits in Guilford, not in Benhampton, not in Syracuse, Albany, or wherever. And how do you address that? Because we saw the same thing happen in Bluestone.
Yep.
Okay? The GC was from out of state, I think, and all kinds of other things, and very little...
The GC was from downtown New York.
Okay, so, the idea was that the benefit to local people was very, very little compared to what the promises sounded like. So, that's a concern.
So, here's how I would respond to that. So, there are multiple different streams of benefits from a project like this. So, I think the best way to parse that out is to break it into all its pieces. So, one piece is construction jobs, and those are the biggest number of jobs, if you're looking at like full-time equivalents. Then there's permanent jobs, which are relatively few, but that is one thing. And then there's tax and host community revenue, and then there's land payments. And each of those go to different groups of people. So, for construction workers, there are only so many construction workers in the town of Guilford, for sure. If we can hire local folks, for example, in Laugol, we hired a local contractor to build our O&amp;M building, because that was the only local shop that had the right sort of expertise, who could do one of these jobs. There was a, there was a local rock trenching machine that we were able to hire, but to your point, not everyone is from the town of Laugol. But seventy-three percent of our workers on that project lived within a hundred miles of the project, but to your point, a hundred miles is a lot bigger than Guilford. So, I don't think I can make any promises on the construction worker side of the house that mean anything to you, because I can't promise that there are enough construction workers in the town of Guilford who even want a job with us. Probably the ones overhearing your conversation earlier, everybody who's any good is already too busy to care. Then there's the permanent workers' side of the house. If we can find anybody locally who wants a job with us, there's likely to be administrative job, and then some technician jobs. If we can find them and train them up, we absolutely will, because we want somebody from Guilford, if we can at all have it. Because the most, the person who wants to live in Guilford is the person who already lives in Guilford, not somebody who lives in Benhampton, or Wyoming, or any other place. So, we will try like heck to hire local staff for the permanent positions. But at the end of the day, if nobody wants it, we'll have to hire the next local, you know, somebody from Green maybe wants the job. So, that's the, that's the laborer part, and I can't make any promises because it too applies, and who can do the job. Then there's the tax revenue and the host community, which I kind of lumped together as one, although they are not actually one. So, there's a pilot agreement with the IBA. That money gets split into three pieces. Some goes to the county, some to the school, some to the town. In each of those cases, those money recipients do what they will with it. They can lower taxes, or they can increase benefits, but those are kind of the only two choices they've got. And then on the host, so then, the other part of it's the host community agreement, that's just money direct from us to the town, that's your, that's your play money, do anything you want with it. I sure as heck can't tell you, but it's up to you and your constituents what to do with it. You can add more benefits to the town, you can drive down taxes, you can put a new roof on this building, but it doesn't look like it needs it. And then there's the landowner payments. And I feel like the landowner payments, which generally add up to just about as much money as the taxes and host immune, host community money, the landowner money is what goes to the people who actually live here on the land here. I feel like that is the most direct and obvious benefit to local people, who are actually owning the land in Guilford, because that's why the project's here. In Lewis County is a fine example of the benefits that that provides. So, for farmers, and nationwide, this is a, this is a true statistic, that farmers who have a wind turbine on their property invest fifty percent more money in their farms than farmers who don't have a turbine. And that stands to reason, because what do farmers invest in the minute they have a dollar? Their farm. They buy a better tractor, they put a new roof on the cow. And if they have money, some extra play money, because they have a wind turbine, they actually have some money to invest back into their farms. So, up in Lewis County, for example, you saw farms expanding and improving their operations in ways that hadn't been seen in sort of forever, because of the wind turbine money that came in. And I'm not talking about my project, I'm talking about the Maple Ridge project. Part of the reason the community was so receptive when I showed up was because Maple Ridge had been such a good neighbor, and the money had just poured into the community, and they said, "Oh, you're the wind lady, you write checks, please give us some more." Effectively what they said, when I walked into the town supervisor's office, because they've seen what the benefit has given. Their school is the schmancyest school I've seen in public school in New York State. It's unbelievable if you go to Laugol Academy. And that's all wind money. I was running on their, their track in their sports fields, I was like, "Oh, this is what it feels like to run on wind turbines, because it's so nice." So, so between the tax money, the host community money, and the landowner money, that's really where I see the local benefit. I can't make any promises about jobs. I would like to, and we certainly work to hire as many local people as we can, but we don't know who applies.
How long has your, any of your wind projects have been in the region?
In New York State, our oldest one turned on in 2009, it's called Sheldon, it's out of Wyoming County. So, that makes it, 2009, fourteen years old. Oldest for the company, a couple years old than that, maybe?
I just, I just find it interesting that Calpine and Bluestone, these guys went through all the grunt work and all of our lousy meetings, all the crap that they went through to get to here, and then they sell it because they can't afford the turbines, but the turbines are supposed to be, they're supposed to be self-great and such moneymakers, but the ones that went through all the work to get them here can't afford to buy them. So, that's kind of, I don't, I don't get it, I guess, you know?
As somebody who's put, you know, my time into this project, it's extremely disappointing to me to sell this project to these guys, right? So, I, you know, but I guess it wouldn't trivialize like the, you know, ultimately, it's a, for either Invenergy or Calpine or Northland to make a huge investment like this, it has to make financial sense. And, you know, when we looked at the numbers this past summer, we just could not make, figure out a way to make those economics work. And I think Marguerite pointed to a couple reasons that Invenergy can be successful where Northland was not. I think it's a little bit like the difference between a little local airline and, you know, Delta buying, buying aircraft from Boeing, right? Like, one, they're not paying the same price for those airplanes, I can tell you that. And so, so there's that aspect, there's the aspect of Invenergy maybe being able to take advantage of, of, you know, the larger number of wind farms they have in terms of operating it. And then, you know, Marguerite alluded as well to a project, a transmission project they have, you know, out of Delaware County, and I don't know how you guys add that in, but there's obviously some value. So, those are some ways that Invenergy can justify the investment, whereas, whereas Northland, like, you know, I, as, as, as some of the members of, you know, the board, I've tried to provide some updates since last summer, we've, we've tried like heck to try to make this investment work, and we just weren't able to get there. We're very, very close, very, very close, but we just could not quite get over the finish line to justify the green light to spend, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars, putting it at risk, and so...
Another thing that concerns me is the fact that you're going with a huge company, if this project fails in ten years, they don't care, they have more, they have more money. You know, it's like, a small company might have worked a little bit harder to make things last, and, you know, and like that, live up to all their agreements and stuff, but larger companies don't necessarily mean better neighbors or better, I don't know, it's just, it can be a little scarier.
I can understand that perspective. I mean, I think, I think I'm pretty confident that our company will be around in twenty years. It's, you know, we're sort of the Delta of wind companies, if you will. But I think that, that you would not want the project to keep changing hands. And I think one of the points of confidence Invenergy might have to offer is that we're, we're going to be the final owner. We don't sell our projects unless, you know, in the Midwest, we have to sell our projects, because private companies can't own wind projects, the utilities have to own them. So, we build them, and we sell them off to the utilities, because that's the business model out there. Here in New York, we built the first project in 2009, we still own and operate, we're going to keep on running it, because that's our business model. To your point about the expensive turbines and doesn't this make a lot of money, all of the numbers in a project like this are mind-bogglingly large. The turbines are wildly expensive, the bank loans, even worse. You do make money in the energy market, but it takes thirty years to make it all back. It is a really long investment. It is not for the faint of heart, it is not for the smallest budget. Part of the problem with my community project back in the day was that we were just community members. We pooled our funds, I raised, the hundred and fifty families, all my friends and neighbors and everybody, we raised three million dollars together, just to do the development work to try to put the project up. I wasn't even buying the turbines, of course. And what I felt so acutely was how much at risk that community money was. I eventually lost it all, because a wealthy opponent from out of town showed up and killed the whole project. And I lost the money of all of the people I know and love. Three million dollars gone down the tubes. And I had to look all my investors in the face and tell them that I had failed them. That is not a business to be in when you're investing the dollars of your friends and neighbors and family members. It has to be big corporate dollars. It's the only way that it's fair. It has to go into it eyes wide open, so that you, you don't have to stare into your own neighbor's eyes and say, "I failed you," the way I had to do. So, part of the reason I work for the big company I do is because it helps eliminate the risk of failure, and it goes into these investments eyes wide open. But it takes thirty years to make the investment back, because all the numbers are big, and the margins are really slim, actually. It gets this reputation, "Oh, renewable people, they're making money hand over fist." No, we're not. If we were making money hand over fist, more people would be doing it, and we'd be building stuff a lot faster. We're not, because the margins are razor-thin, and we've got to squeak that by, and if turbine pricing goes up another five percent, whoa, we can't build it this year. This is exactly what Chris is talking about. So, we've got to wait for the margins to, to come back together, so we can build it, so we, so the big lenders will lend us their money, because they crawl through our books and look at all those financial projections and say, "Well, in year seventeen, it looks like you're going to be losing money if the following three things happen." And they won't lend against that. So, it's, it's harrowing financially, to be honest. It is, it is a tough business. But my, my personal goal is two things, for whatever that's worth. As an upstate New York resident and a farmer myself, I believe in renewable energy, but I also significant, like, the other half of my job is economic development, because I live in a town that's a lot like Guilford. I have a lot less nice town hall than this. My town hall is also, also the court and the food distribution to the food pantry, was built seventy years ago, and it doesn't have septic system. I understand what it is to come from a small, poor town, and to live in a small, poor town, and to not, to not have tons of opportunities to improve that. And so, part of the reason I do my work is to bring these big corporate dollars, which happen to be in the form of renewable energy, into towns like Guilford, to make things better, to spread the money around, through the town taxes, through the landowners, through whatever few jobs we can offer. Even though it's not many, it's a few, and they're good jobs, and they have benefits in 401Ks. And not a lot of other companies are looking at towns like Guilford and saying, "Hey, we want to hand you a few million bucks a year, would you want some?" That's part of why I do this job, because, because I want, I want to spread that love around. I want to take that New York City money and spread it around upstate New York to people who deserve, because you are just like, just like my neighbors, and just like my family. We're fundamentally relatively poor upstate New Yorkers. We're kind of all in this together.
Your definition of wealth, I think, differs a great deal from many people here. It's not about all money. There's far more valuable things in life than money.
I completely agree.
But problem resolution, effective, expeditious. If there's a problem somewhere along the line, how will you guys respond? Talk is cheap.
Understood. So, during, so we're in what we call the development phase, which is, until the turbines are standing up, it is my team's responsibility to respond to questions and concerns. I've never had a question or concern that I haven't responded to. I give my business cards out like it's going out of style.
Beyond that.
Once the project's up and operating, it's a, it's a separate branch of the company, it's an operations team who runs it, I'll be not the girl to call, although you can always call me, always call Dan. At number three up there, I'm still getting calls, because they haven't really got the hang of the fact that it's a new guy that they got to call. But there is both onsite staff, who are there, and who will reach out to everybody and say, "I'm the dude on the job, here's my phone number, call me with questions." So, there's both regular interpersonal, you know where he works, you know he'll be there every weekday morning between seven and three, and you can knock on the door and voice your concern, but there is also like a very express complaint resolution and issue resolution plan, which is part of the compliance filings, I believe has been filed here, but there was a draft one in the Article X, and we will revise it when it comes to doing it for real.
We did get approval on the complaint.
Okay. And so, that lists a whole thing, it says, "Here's the number to call, here's what we go through, here's how we review it. In the following thirty days, we will do the following things. If we still haven't resolved it, here's the next step, how to elevate it, take it to DPS, blah, blah, blah." There is a whole thing. And we will be accountable.
This is a scary area, because I'm sure every one of us here, in a different context, has called customer service, where a particular company said they had the greatest customer service, and, you know, they made you feel warm and fuzzy, and then when you call customer service, you get nowhere's fast.
I know, I understand.
So, we're really skeptical about that.
That you should be.
Wouldn't hiring locally, as you pointed out that you seek to do, make it all a little easier, because it is people you know?
That's part of the point.
Right.
It's part of the point. I want these, it should be people who are from here, who know people who are part of the community, because part of the, part of the personal investment is, if you have a local person working here, they're not going to scam their neighbors, it's against their self-interest.
Is there anybody else who has not spoken?
Well, I got another question. We've got more, and we play about a half hour. That's fine, that's fine. Can you talk a little bit about decommissioning?
Because I know we talk about fine margins here, right? And 30-year lifespan usually of the turbine. I know with Northland, they put some money in escrow and all that. But the whole process, I think everyone, not everyone here, but a lot of folks here, it was not a whole lot of warm and fuzzy about the decommissioning process and whether we actually had the money in place where either Northland failed or Invenergy failed, I'm sorry.
No, I'm wrong. I'm okay.
Right, fails and now I'm stuck with 25 turbines up here. And now I got to figure out with the state, the county, maybe EPA, because I got an EPA super fun site. Talk decommissioning, talk about how you're going to make the community whole again if we don't put up more turbines.
Yeah. So there's, I think there's two answers to that question. There's the path of if Invenergy's still on the job in 30 years, then it's time to just take them down. And then second is if Invenergy vanishes into the night, then what is your recourse for real? So in the preferred scenario, we're still on the job in 30 years. And, you know, nuclear cold fusion has shown up or whatever, and turbines are...
Well, you have a turbine that generates 25 works, which is one, right?
Right. Exactly right. Whatever. The future has come. We don't need this stuff anymore. We're taking it down. And Invenergy's still the owner on the job. We would hire a decommissioning contractor to take it down. And the physical process would go something like this. We build a crane walk into each of these turbines. We set up the giant crane that's going to put them up. Same kind of crane is going to take them back down again. You lower each blade to the ground one by one. But instead of trucking them off whole, you cut them into three or four pieces. Or they actually now have an onsite shredder blade truck where basically you just, it's like a giant wood chipper. You feed the entire wind turbine blade into this thing, comes out as pellets and gets recycled into new ingredients. You take the nacelle down, that's the box on the top, put that on a lowboy and off it goes. And then the tower sections would need to be cut, just, you know, oxyacetylene cut into pieces, off to the scrapyard. You, in terms of the foundation, if it's an agricultural field, you take it down 48 inches. If it's not, you take it only 36 inches. But basically, you jackhammer the first top three or four feet of concrete out of the ground, remove it, take it off-site in a dumpster. And then you backfill, you leave the rest of that big mushroom base down there. You cut off all the cables down at four feet if it's a field. Again, backfill, top dress with topsoil, replant to whatever the farmer wants it to be planted in. If it's not a farm field, if it's a forest, let's plant some seedlings. I don't know. But turn it back into growing material. Because in order to pass our SWIP, it has to be growing green things. So there would not be any oversized loads in the exiting process because we'd cut down all the oversized stuff into regular sized materials. In the scenario in which Invenergy has vanished in the night and you guys are like, what the heck? What do we do now? There would be two different paths according to how old the facility is and who the remaindermen are, essentially. So there is a company called Noble Green, Noble Environmental Power. They built the first wind projects in New York, six of them. Couple in Wyoming County, four in Clinton County, and in Franklin County. Those guys went bankrupt, I don't know, five years after the project stood up. But it didn't mean that there was no one left because the debt holders all cared very much that they made their money back. So the debt holders, whatever banks those were, came in and said, okay. In the same way that a mortgage bank takes over a house that gets foreclosed on and the bank goes and recoups their money by auctioning the house off, in this case, they just operated the wind project. They said, well, the only way to get our money back is to keep this darn thing running. So they did. So they have done. And then they finally found a buyer last year, now a company called ADS owns and runs them. So even though it has changed hands because the original company went bankrupt, they're still running and they've always been running and they'll be running until they don't run anymore. But in a sort of worst-case scenario where there's no bank who cares and Invenergy's not answering the phone and you're like, gosh, I think these things aren't operating. What do we do now? And there's no one answering the phone. That's the point at which the letter of credit that will be posted with town from before we ever dig holes, that will be a pain for the town clerk and deputy clerk to deal with the paperwork because they're very picky about it. They're like, you have to FedEx this back the very next week after you've signed it. And you tell the bankers, well, we don't have overnight FedEx here in the town of Guilford. What do we do? You come to us and you say, Margery, figure out how we get this piece of paperwork to FedEx. And I send somebody and they take it. Because this is exactly how this has been done at number three. There is no FedEx in the town of Harrisburg anymore than there is in Guilford. But we make it work. You get the paperwork out the door to the bankers. And what that allows you to do is means that the town holds that paperwork. And it's got a phone number and an amount of money. It's, I don't know, millions of dollars.
Yeah, but so I mean, I think it was $10 million. It's nothing.
Especially 30 years from now.
30 years from now. It's a drop in the bucket. And so that's my concern is today, you know, and I'm not trying to, you know... When I hear people tell me $10 million, $10 million is nothing when you're talking about projects like this. We spent $10 million talking about it right now, right? So when I hear the line of credit in 2023, you know, decommissioning in 2053, $3 million is worth $3,000, or $10 million is worth $10,000 in 2053. Never end it. Technology, I got all that stuff, but, you know...
So the amount ups every five years. So the state comes to us and basically there's a third-party engineer re-costs the whole darn thing every five years. And says, okay, based on the price of labor and the price of everything in the world today, whatever today is, how much would it really cost? And then they add a percentage on top of that to make sure there's a buffer. And our number three project is a 50% buffer. So, you know, whatever the engineer's estimate came in, we gave 50% over that to the towns and they hold that. And they can exercise it pretty quickly because as a letter of credit, it's not like a bond. You don't have to argue with somebody about it. You just cash it out immediately.
Right.
So, yeah, it should up.
Are there any like road improvements that happen during the decommissioning process? Or is that...
Does the road agreement go through the life of the project?
Is that, or is it back on the town? I just...
No, the decommissioning goes through the life of the project. So, or I'm sorry, the road use agreement goes through.
Road use agreement covers any periods of major maintenance or the decommissioning. Anytime that vehicles...
Bob, do you have one more? We're going to wrap up.
So to put it in a nutshell, as long as prices are high, nothing's going to happen for a year or two. But if prices suddenly drop, bingo, someone's going to take off.
There you have it, sir.
Sorry, just, I just want to throw something out with regards to public health. We know whether anyone wants to admit it or not, there are people who are sensitive once the turbines are built to infrasound, noise, whatever the case may be. Do you guys have an element within the company that has looked at the public health here, you know, data, et cetera, or that responds if the negative health effects do increase in the area? If people are having problems that they didn't have prior to the turbines? Is that something you guys do respond to? Or is that just on the community to, you know, go to the hospital in Norwich and say, ever since the turbines went off, I have headaches?
We definitely respond. We respond to everybody, as I said. I mean, we're here to give out our cards like we are. Whether or not we can do anything about it is a totally different question and what it is and where it came from. I mean, we operate over 100 wind farms. This is not a problem for our business.
I'd say thank you for coming. I think this is probably the first meeting that we'll have. And I would expect there's going to be many more. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for getting here.
Thanks for having us. I really appreciate it. I love your questions. I love your engagement. Dan, did you bring your cards? I brought a pile of cards. Call us.